I have just shipped. She just wants.
You ready on the way, wife?
You're the first one.
We found it.
You can just, I just do your notes if you want to. Should happen right there.
Got it.
You ready?
Yes.
Monthly meeting of Anderson County Board of Education will come to war. Andrew, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is Director of Schools Evaluation.
The evaluation for Dr. Parrott was done at the end of February and he received a score of 99.33 out of 100. The committee also reviewed his contract and we voted to, Thursday night, we voted, Personnel Committee, to approve the contract, extend it for four years and increase his pay to $190,000. Monday night, when did I say?
You said Thursday.
Monday night, yes. This is Thursday night. I'm sorry.
Tim's having a conversation.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tim.
Renew, renew instead of extend, renew.
To approve and renew the contract for four years is what it says right here.
Yep.
Um, I so moved.
Second.
Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Nobody's here.
Nobody's here to say no, that's good. Well, I really appreciate, I am honored and I hope that I keep doing a good job. I am, I am, I love this school system and I'll do you a good job for the next four years. It's hard to believe it's been six years.
This is, you're gonna lie at the best.
It's been a smooth six years, I'll say that.
I'm not gonna tell you who it is, but this guy that lives up in my district watches the stuff and he goes, "You all are working Tim Parrott today." He said, "He's losing weight." He said, "I don't know what to say about him." And I said, "He's gotten himself back in shape and he couldn't believe you had even walked fast." I'll do the resolution.
Resolution for special ed teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Burl. It is always an honor when we get a chance to recognize our teachers and our staff and everything. And tonight, we're here to honor our special teachers. And Anderson County Board of Education Resolution honoring Anderson County Special Teachers. Whereas Anderson County School System is served by an admirable group of special teachers, including art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, technology teachers, speech teachers, counselors, and our... And whereas this group of professionals is made up of competent and dedicated individuals who play a large role in the success of the students and the school as a whole in Anderson County. And whereas the special teacher staff members in Anderson County School District are responsible for providing a variety of vital services to many of our students on a daily basis. Whereas these professionals join the effort to help us meet a unique needs of each student, from teaching valuable life skills to offering encouragement, enrichment activities, hope for students in despair which is needing more now than ever. Whereas Anderson County Board of Education wishes to honor the commitment of these services to our special teachers that they provide for Anderson County Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Anderson County Board hereby establishes March 10, 2022, as Special Teachers Appreciation Day in all of Anderson County Schools. And be it further resolved, the Board expresses appreciation and the thanks to all who have provided these special services in our school district. We encourage each school and community to recognize these individuals for the role in the success of our school system. Adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by the elective Board of Education in Anderson County, Tennessee at its meeting on the 10th day of March, 2022.
May we approve the motion?
You didn't sign that.
Or the resolution?
Second.
Resolution passed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest that on these resolutions, we make the special day the next day, so that after we pass it, they can celebrate on Friday.
Yeah.
They're already done today.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, we will do that.
We told them it's a day wash today. That's right. Keeps them from celebrating.
We give them, units will recognize them. I give the principals the above and beyond awards today and give them the check, so hopefully they got their check today.
There you go.
Be there half a day tomorrow.
Yeah.
Recognition of guests. There being none, persons to be heard. Being none, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, approval of the agenda, discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, approval of consent, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Executive approval. There being none this month, comments from the Chair of the... There being none, the above and beyond awards.
At ACCTC, I have Madison Mashburn, who's a permanent sub. And at Norris Elementary, I have Marty Bailey, who is a reading recovery interventionist.
At Fairview Elementary, I have Jim Kubin, who's a physical education instructor. And at Norwood Elementary, I have Zan Brayden, who's also a PE teacher.
At Lake City Middle, I have Tiffany Warman, who's a special ed teacher. And at Clinch River Community Schools, Sherry Scruggs, who's a middle school assistant.
I have Wanda Bale, preschool. She's a sub. And I have, at Clinton Middle School, I have Candace Claiborne, culinary.
And I have Jennifer Rodabaugh, who's the academic coach at Claxton. And Roya Mitchell, who's the counselor at Grand Oaks Elementary.
And I have Danny Bright, counselor at Norwood Middle. And Becca Seaver, special ed teacher at Dust Valley Elementary.
And I have Kathy Tony, special ed at Anderson County High. And Robin Jordan, PE at Andersonville Elementary. And Don Bale has... Bad Noman, STEM at Norris Middle. And Rebecca Bozeman, technology teacher at Anderson County Elementary. Sorry about that, Don.
That's all right. Little traffic jam.
I really have no other comments at this time. Comments from student board.
It's good to be with you all again tonight. I first want to congratulate our sister school, Clinton High School, and their boys' basketball team for going to state. And they'll be playing next week and we want to wish them congratulations and good luck. Today has been a really busy day at Anderson County High School, along with this month. We actually had eighth graders from Norris Middle School and Lake City Middle School visiting our campus. So I believe we had 78 from Lake City and we had, I believe, 170-ish, around that number, from Norris Middle School. So we had a pretty packed house, but we had a really good time. We also want to thank Ms. Watson and Mr. Harrington and along with Ms. Irwin for helping make the whole day come together, along with Ms. Martin, the counselor. Baseball and softball preseason has also kicked off in Anderson County High School. Our baseball team is playing, actively playing Lenore City right now. And our softball team is hosting Farragut, well, not hosting Farragut, they're playing at Farragut right now and they just beat Oak Ridge the other night. Our track and field team is also going against Farragut tonight at home. We're also renovating our gym currently. We're adding in new, well, we're not adding in, we're making new bleachers and we're also renovating our gym floor. But while all that is going on, our students are getting to sit outside and eat their lunch and have a good time. We actually had a one-on-one football tournament the other day with a good bit of the student body and it was a very, very exciting occasion. Very spur of the moment, but it was a blast. But with all that being said, we've had a great month at Anderson County High School and we're excited for the next coming months to figure, finish out the 2021-2022 semester.
Thank you for your positive vibes for Clinton.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm actually excited I can finally be here again. And I'm happy to be here today to report all of the good things going on at Clinton High School. So this past week, our choir attended the J.B. Lau Festival and toured Puyallup, getting an exclusive glimpse into the music program. Our band visited Maryville College to perform at the Clayton Center and they are actually in Disney right now, celebrating all of their hard work for the season. Rowan State has worked with our treasured gear-up leaders this past week to help students prepare for college registration, open their online accounts, and complete necessary verification documents. And the dual enrollment process for next year has already begun and CHS already has an incredible 135 students signed up. We had our eighth grade night last week, which was a huge success, and we also invited many of the young pupils to tour Clinton High School and see what career paths are available and what they may be interested in. Overall, we look forward to welcoming many bright young Dragons to CHS this coming fall. This past week was local scholarships week and we look forward to celebrating our many student successes later on with our very generous community. Recently, we had Mr. Service, Mrs. Scramlin, and Ms. Haney start up our new esports team and they've been hosting Mario Kart tournaments all, all this week through lunch. Many students love to stop by and cheer on whoever is playing their favorite character. I personally like to clap for Princess Peach. Next Tuesday, the Youth Ambassador Coalition will travel with the staff of ASAP of Anderson to speak with Representative McNally and Powers to encourage and educate them about substance misuse data in our community and offer our potential solutions we have to these problems. Our track team started up and is going strong. They have their second meet tonight at home and so we're anticipating a lot of good news. Our soccer team is also kicked off and we're super excited to watch their season. We had a tough loss against Oneida, but the victories will be coming soon, I have no doubt. And finally, I want to give a huge congratulations to the Clinton High School Boys Basketball Team for their incredible win against Volunteer High School, which has given them the opportunity to play at state next week. The entirety of Dragon Nation is beyond proud of those boys and we can't wait to see how well they do. Overall, Dragon pride is at an all-time high and for good reason. The students of Clinton are breaking records, building a positive atmosphere, and celebrating each other's successes as one big family. So go Dragons!
Director's report.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Burl. Again, just want to thank you all for your, you've given me the opportunity to lead this school system. It is, it is an honor and I'm humbled by that. Just a few things, Norris Middle School, the project that we have going on there, the bid's open on that on Monday and hopefully that they're gonna come in under. I've told Clay he's gonna make sure they come in under and we will get started on them really soon, hopefully in the next week or two, but that's gonna be a really great addition to that school up there for six new classrooms. Had a, had a meeting today with the President of TBA about the school in Claxton, was a very productive meeting. Didn't get any signed contract yet, but we, he, he is very interested in becoming a partner with us on that new school, wherever it may be. So he's got some things he has to do, but again, it was a very positive meeting. I want to give Tracy Wondell, he worked with to get that meeting set up, so he, he's really helping out with that. Another thing that, because of the way the procurement is for school systems, we will be able from now on, when our senior class graduates, any student that needs a Chromebook or wants a Chromebook, the ones we take out of service that year, we'll be able to give that to them free. So we'll be working with the, with the schools and this year, we take them out of the elementary schools, so they'll take them out, they'll refurbish them, they will make sure everything works on them, and then the students will come back after they graduate if they want a Chromebook and it will be wide open. It won't, it won't, they won't have to, to go into our email or things like that to log in, but it'll be something that they can use for the next three or four years. So it's a, it's not a big deal, but I think it is for people that don't have those things. I sent you some new information on the new funding formula tonight that I got from the state. Looking at that funding formula, it looks very positive. I think we could see a very big increase in the money we get from the state, somewhere around maybe five to six million dollars. So, you know, we could, the, the great thing about that new funding is our school system, we don't have all of this backlog in deferred maintenance because what you all put in place, we've got, our buildings are up to date, we're doing all of these things. And we'll be able to use that funds for raises and for really maybe cutting down, making some class sizes at our elementary schools smaller, hiring some more staff for our mental health of our students and things like that. The great thing in our budget that we're looking at next year, we're still going to, even though we may not have to fund it all, we can still use some extra money. We're gonna put all of our nurses in there. I just think it's something that, from now on, we need a nurse in every school. We need a counselor in every school. We need our SROs there. Those are things that are just basic, that maybe some people thought it's frills, it's just something we need to have a great school. Also with our, with our athletics and things like that, as Sully said, you know, we're tearing out the bleachers and the floors and things like that. And we're doing all those things within our budget. We don't have to go out and ask county commissioner, we don't have to go out and borrow that money. So those are things we need to do. We do have a special called meeting that I have to attend. That's where I was at on Monday night, the Planning Commission at Clinton City. I'll be there on the 21st at 6 o'clock to talk about our softball field. So overall, I think, I talked to our principals this morning, they've done a great job. Our staff's done a great job. We're ready for the test. We're gonna be, start taking tests here in about another month and they're cranking up for it, so it's a great time to be in Anderson County. Budget. Yep, that's all I have.
Committee reports. Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee met Monday night. We had a long agenda, but appropriations, appropriation 1A was appropriate funds for a group of 60 teachers who were attending a professional learning communities work institute to cover their meals. It's $12,000. 1B, 1I are adjustments at the State Education Department budget. 1B is additional allocation in the consolidated administration, $3,088.23. 1C is a decrease in the consolidated administration, $1,176.8. 1D is additional allocation for Title 1A, $1,129.68. 1E is carryover for Title 1A neglected, $25,937.90. 1F is additional allocation, 1A neglected, $5,887. 1G is additional allocation for Title 2A, $49,305.31. 142 is appropriation from the American Rescue Plan homeless grant, $49,487.34. 1I is professional development carryover, $15,451.72. 1J and K are both nutrition. One is to appropriate USDA reimbursement programs, $350,000. And 1K is to reflect a decrease in local school funds of $100,000. So those are the appropriations, all approved by the committee and forwarded to the full board. And I move we approve.
Second.
Moving second, we approve appropriations 1A through 1K. Discussion. Big none, roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell? Mr. Gillam Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCann? And Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burl? Motion carries.
Transfers, 2A was to transfer balance of payroll accounts, just to put money in the proper codes, $1,067,809. 2B is technology travel to conferences, $4,350. 2C is purchase of a replacement vehicle for technology, $25,000. 1D is transfer funds for contracted services, $10,000. 2E through J are all federal programs. 2E is transfer funds for, to reconcile accounts with the state-approved budget, $1,878.33. 2F is workers' comp insurance, $83.62. 2G is funds for supplies and vehicles, $21,459.6. 2H is supplies and building improvements, $26,869.56. 2I is purchase of teaching strategies curriculum, $9,386.50. And 2J is transfer funds for increase in health insurance, $2,400. So the transfers were also approved by the Budget Committee and forwarded to the full board, so I move we approve transfers 2A through 2J.
Moving second, we approve appropriations 2A through 2J. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the head start budgets are listed under action items, so we can do them here while we're here, if you don't care.
Okay.
We have to approve those budgets at the, at our March meeting, so this is March.
Wait just a minute. That's the budget and these are grants under action items. Those are two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Redd, the thing.
No, these are.
Oh, those are grants.
Two separate items.
Sorry, 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 sorry. My bad. We're doing what we're supposed to do.
You're doing it right.
The head start 2022-2023 budget, $2,563,420. The, and we'll do all these together, I assume that's okay. The early head start 2022-2023 budget, $1,472,238. We also approved the training and technical assistant 2022-23 budget, $28,881. And the US Department of Agriculture 2022-2023 budget, $143,500. All those were approved by the Budget Committee and forwarded to the full board, so I move we approve those four budgets.
I'll second that.
Moving second, we approve appropriation 3A through 3D. Assuming that's appropriation, we need a roll call vote.
It's the budgets.
It's just the budget.
Yeah, it's just the budget now. Yeah, we appropriate them next year.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
A couple of other items, we, we talked about joining the TSBA Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust and we decided to take no action on that, but to take a recommendation from staff as to whether or not we want to get involved in that trust. We didn't have strong opinions one way or the other. The other was to approve the salary schedule, updated pay scales that were before us. I don't have those, but you should have those. So to approve, so I'll move that we approve the updated pay scales and then we'll talk about the other one, so.
Second. Moving second, we approve the pay scales as presented. Discussion. If none, all in favor say.
Discussion, what was presented, we asked, the motion was to pull out the cafeteria.
Yeah, we, that, we did not include that.
Yep.
That was the motion then, uh...
Right. So we approved them without that.
Without that.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that in a minute.
Do we need to change anything?
No, the minutes are correct.
Okay.
With the exception of the, of the pay increase for the high school cafeteria workers, because we wanted some clarification.
Yep.
So it's the updated pay scale as presented without the cafeteria worker, the high school cafeteria worker increase.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And Dr. Parrott's gonna explain.
Yep, yep. So, so the high school, when the pandemic hit two years ago, the, we cannot hire a part-time custodian for the high schools and the high schools are on a hour lunch. So they have, they have a whole lot harder job than the other cafeteria workers and you couldn't get anybody, when we were hiring people, you couldn't get anybody that would go to the high school. They, they would go to the middle school and elementary school, but they wouldn't go to the high school. So she had it in her budget and it was a hard-to-feel position, so we, we started giving that dollar hour about, almost two years ago. And to date, we've not lost anybody at the high schools. So it's something we really need to keep, to keep those people at the high schools. It is a lot harder job when you, the, the elementary is really spread out and they don't have to go out and mop the floors and clean up the tables and everything like that. With the high school, they have to do all of that. So that's why we, we wanted to put that in there. Does that make sense?
Are you recommending that, Dr. Parrott?
I'm recommending that we do it, yes, because it, here's the thing is, a lot of our, a lot of our people that we hire, they, they have younger kids and really and truly, when the kids are bigger than the workers, it kind of scares them a little bit, so this is, it has really made it a whole lot easier to staff that high school.
By the recommendation of the Director, I move we approve the increase for cafeteria high schoolers.
Second.
Moving. I hear a second.
Second.
Moving second, approval of the recommendation of the Director. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
We had one other agenda item for after-hours school program, but that was moved, that'll be an action item and Ms. Portwood will take care of that one. The last item is the, to, we had a discussion about our board scholarships and we decided to leave them as they were, so we took no action on that. That is everything from Budget.
Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee met Monday night. We had one policy to discuss, the employee designations during emergency closure. And the change in that policy is allowing the principals to have the ability to regulate the time that the workers come into work during emergency closures. Some cannot get there at their regular start time, so they have to make up their other time. And they are scheduled to work six hours and that, the policy change and the committee recommended approval on 1.80113, employee designations during emergency closure on first reading and I so moved.
Second.
Moving second is approval of policy 1.80113 on first reading. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
It's all one policy.
Okay.
Building and ground.
Mr. Chairman, Building and Grounds Committee met also on Monday night, and, uh, we approved to, uh, forward the planning for the new school to begin construction in, uh, 2023, and to hire Michael Brady Incorporated to do the architectural estimate cost at 15 to 17 billion, and that is just preliminary startup on it, and I so moved that we have Michael Brady start the process as the committee met.
Second.
I hear a second.
I do.
I'm sorry. Uh... Building and ground, uh, was this on the Claxton?
Yeah.
Claxton Elementary, yes.
Yeah, Claxton's go.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That's all.
Personnel.
No, we've already done.
Personnel. We've already done it.
Okay. That's all you had.
Yes, we did the evaluation and the contract. Yes.
Transportation.
Transportation.
The Transportation Committee met on Monday in my absence. Uh, my partner in crime, Dr. Portwood, took over. Uh, since that meeting, there has been a request, um, that we gather a little bit more information, um, as it relates, because the fuel is pretty volatile right now, and to get some additional input from the contractors, so I would, uh, move that we delay taking any action on this for another month to allow our central office staff to communicate a little bit more fully with our contractors.
Sir. Move and second, we delay the transportation meeting until next month. Discussion. None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Action item.
I mean, uh...
Joe?
What?
Joe, did you want to bring those up?
Uh, these are just the continuations. That's year three on the, and the continuation grants. This is year three of the five-year grant program, and these are the grants for our Head Start, early Head Start, the delegate, and the teaching and training plans for both, and then item F is the selection criteria, and it had one minor change in it. We can approve these as a group as long as they appear separate in the minutes, and I'll make a motion to approve Head Start documents A through F.
Second.
Move and second, we approve, uh, Head Start documents A through F. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Anything else?
After school, the, after-school's hour scope.
Um, Monday night, we talked, uh, briefly about an after-hour school, the need for an after-hour school that would give a, um, a setting, something like Clint River, uh, and this was mainly from Clinton High School to, because they're having issues getting kids in, or maybe they've got too many, but, um, it was put on the back burner. Um, Tim had asked that we do a, um, form a committee to go to a school in Knox County, I think it was, that has after-hour schools and look and see how they're run, what it would cost, and then come back to the board with that and see if it'd be beneficial for both of our high schools maybe to have that.
What, what we're looking at is, we, we really don't want to, vaping is a problem. Vaping is a problem everywhere. Well, a lot of those vaping, they have THC in them, and what we're doing is, we're filling those schools up with the THC. They have to go there for 20 days or 30 days and things like that, so this might be a way that you could still have those students, you could still have them out of the regular student body, but they could also do that time in the afternoon, so it doesn't fill up that school for some things that we need to do up there, because what is happening is, we, if we fill it all up with punitive people, then we don't have room for the people that really need it, that is not, that, that they're not up there because of discipline problems. Does that make sense?
Right.
Is that kind of like what we used to call after-school detention?
Yeah, it, it is, but this would, this would be more of a, a three to four hours a night, and, and...
Of class.
Yeah, they do them at, and, and what is great about us is all of our teachers do Google Classroom now, so it's not like you, you would still have to have some teachers, but they could, uh, just what I've been kind of researching, they would still be able to be tied to that teacher, and they could still be able to do that work, and so, I, I think something we really need to look in, I can't say one way or the other right now, but I think something we need to look at and, and take, see if it's something that's viable before we can do.
Well, not to, to change the whole focus on that, but years ago, which was many years ago, when I did master teaching, there was an in-school suspension at Powell High School that was run by, like a drill sergeant, and, you know, it, now that they're doing everything on computers, if we had something like that, where they still get their classroom work done, but they're in a very strict environment, might be something to look into, too.
Well, and, and too, well, we have those, we have a, we have an in-school suspension at, at, uh, all of our middle schools and our high school, but they changed the law that, that's considered a suspension now, and you can't keep them in there over 10 days without having a hearing, so that's what, that's what we have. It's, it's really just for, it, kind of a, hey, I need to put you in there for a day and get you back out, but this would be more, it would be like an alternative setting, so we could go through the planning and everything like that, so they would actually be moved out of that, and you would still have to have a parent meeting. You may not have to go through a full DHA, but you'd have a parent meeting with them.
Okay.
How many students do we have at Clint River?
Paula, 100 and...
You're a little over 100, I count.
Little over 100. Now, that's not counting 21st century.
That's a big number. That's not counting. I don't know if that includes 21st century.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
I don't believe it does.
Yeah.
Well, if you looked at the, uh, the list she gave us this month for discipline, so many of them were vaping.
Yes, yep. That, and it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be that way, and, and here's the thing is, you can buy the stuff at any, you can buy it anywhere, and it has the THC in it, so when we test it, I mean, it's an illegal substance inside of our school, so, and I don't know how we, we, we've got to do, and Paula and I were working on trying to do some more education with our students, and it, it's really, a lot of our parents don't see anything wrong with, whether or not smoking a cigarette, but it, it can be harm, more harmful than a cigarette, the base, because you don't know what's in them.
Right.
And the 20 days is the state.
No, we, we, we did, we did the 20 days because we didn't want to send them up there for nine weeks or something like that. That was what we had in our student code of conduct, and that's what we'll have to do. If we do this, we'll have to go back and change our, our, uh, board policies that will align with our student code of conduct to do this. So, it's, it's a pretty big process of setting a school up.
You will come back with a recommendation of some kind?
Yes, yes. Yep. So, I don't know if you have to...
Do you all have suggestions for the committee?
I, I actually was talking to Dr. Parrott tonight, Scott, since he is budget, uh, Kim Tow, Eric Snyder, Paula, uh, Dan Jenkins, myself, and Tim.
Get me a list, and I'll, the, can we wait and make the appointment next?
Of the committee?
The committee, yes.
Till next month? Well, we need to get to these schools before school's out.
Well, you've actually got the authority. She'll just get you the list. You can do it immediately. We don't have to wait to a meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We'll get you the list. I'll get you the list next week. Well, not next week.
Because Scott's ready to get started.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm, not that school's getting out next month, but it's not long, and we need to try, and we're going to have to make an appointment with some school to get in.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I want to make sure who's...
Yep.
Who's interested, who's not.
Yep, yep. We'll work on it. We'll get it back to you.
We didn't really give them a choice. We just said...
Hear that train whistle?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Give me the list, I'll be the bad guy.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
See it.
That's it.
See it.
Anything else? No meetings?
No. There, there is next month, just to let you know, you may want to put it on your calendar. We're going to have to change, and Pam was looking at, we don't think we did, we talked about, the May board meeting will have to change to probably a Wednesday night, because Thursday night is actually CRCS and Innovation Academy graduation, and then, uh, Anderson County graduates on Friday night, so we'll just have to move that to a Wednesday night, if that's okay with you all. I, we'll move it next month, but I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Be the regular meeting, not the...
Yeah, I, sometimes we, and I think I tried to get all of them, but I don't know how I missed that one.
Anything else?
We give you that one. That's that point three, point six six percent.
Point six that I did miss. Yeah, I'll try my best to prove all that.